Previously met in closed session. And so we are now back in to open. And if you are able, I would like you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Uh, we did have a member tonight. Uh, Steve Astero is in warm, balmy Las Vegas where he's, it's not negative thirty. And he will be participating remotely with us tonight upon board approval for that. Can he hear us okay Tracy?
Yeah, I just got a text from him that said, "Sounds good." Steve, can you hear us?
Yep, everything's good.
Okay, sounds good. Glad to have you with us tonight in spirit at least, even though you're nice and warm. So, um, the board would need to consider that he's here remotely, um, and that, that we are going to grant him permission to participate in full discussion and he has full voting privileges, even though he is remote. Um, he will not be able to participate in any closed session. He was not able to participate in closed session prior to the meeting. And if anything were to happen that we need to go into closed session after the meeting, he would not be able to participate. Um, if technology does impede this process, that he cannot hear us or that the call drops, the board would then say that it's okay to move on without him and without his voting, the, the, the most, the, the meeting would continue as normal. Uh, is there a motion from the board to allow Steve with the prerequisite set forth to participate remotely in this meeting? I moved.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I'll make the motion to allow Steve to participate remotely with the assumption that all the technology works.
Second. It's been properly moved and seconded to allow Steve to participate in this meeting remotely. Is there any discussion?
Is this, uh, how, how are we, how are we doing this in the future? Cause I'll be honest, I, you know, I was, I missed what in October for, when I had to go to a school for investigations on crimes against children?
Yes.
And I would, you know, I had evenings off and I would've loved to participate in our meeting.
Yeah, I think-
Why now and why not in October?
Yes, because that's actually why this was, um, I had asked for this to happen just because of some miscommunications, I think, that had happened, um, with that. And I thought that it would've been nice for you to be able to participate, um, instead of me calling you the next day and having that discussion with you. Um, and so I thought with technology, uh, Steve agreed to it prior to this, that he was able to do that. Um, so it worked out for his situation and I think that would be something that the board would consider moving forward if people are unable to make it and they are agreeable to zoom in or to participate remotely. Um, I think it's just best for everybody involved to do it this way.
I agree.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing done, we'll proceed to vote. All of those in favor of allowing Steve to zoom in electronically to this meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion passes. Steve, you're now with us in the meeting.
And Steve can see you. I didn't know how I made that clear.
Okay.
Come here, he can see you.
Hi Steve. Okay. It sounds fantastic. Um, with that, we'll move on to spotlight on education. So these poor gentlemen can get moving back to where they need to in this desperate cold weather tonight. Thanks for driving all the way here. So with that, go ahead. Uh, we have our representatives here from Kraus Anderson and LHB.
Can you go first?
Sure.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Well, thanks for having-
And make sure you're into the, into the microphone so that Steve can hear you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, good evening. Uh, we'll be brief. Um, first of all, we just wanted to say thank you for letting us be a part of your project. Um, I got some neat facts and stats that I wanted to share, just a few of them, some interesting things. Some of them about, about me and my history in Amory. So last week was my thirtieth year at Kraus Anderson. Twenty-five, if not twenty-six of those years, I've worked on and off in Amory, Wisconsin. One of my earlier school projects was, was this building here. Um, but we worked on the hospital and dental clinic too. So I love coming back to Amory. Let's keep doing it. So, um, so I went back, you know, we had a lot of meetings, planning for the referendum. Some of you remember them. So I went back, you know, nowadays with technology, I went into my schedule and I just, you know, I hit Amory schools and all the meetings pop up I went to. And I'm talking only planning meetings, you know, not construction meetings or after the referendum. And so I came to thirty-eight meetings in Amory that were just not meetings with LHB, not meetings in our office, just in Amory planning for the referendum. So there's thirty-eight meetings for the referendum. But another cool stat for the athletic fields, there was twenty-one meetings just for the athletic fields. Most of them being board meetings. I think a lot of you remember those meetings. So it was kind of fun to like, where am I spending my time? But part of my job, right? Um, one more quick thing, I, I took a look at, um, you know, all the budgets and everything and we have, uh, some software that helps break down labor cost and material costs. I separated what, these are estimate and guesstimates, right? On what was material, uh, I'm sorry, labor cost onsite. So this is just labor onsite, okay? There was a proper, approximately a hundred and eighty thousand people hours onsite with all of the projects. So kind of a cool stat. And that doesn't, that doesn't include the material and where's that made back in the factory. So that was a neat stat. And the last, on time, on budget, there was contingency left over. Good news. Um, I know George has some goals and some other priorities on some maintenance things that might want to get done, but, uh, that's always good news when you're on time and under budget. So in other words, thanks again for letting me be a part of it.
You'll have to take up second residency in Amory now.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to just echo what, what John said. I, uh, I have been working with the district for, I think, over fifteen, almost twenty years. And I have been fortunate because Amory has followed me to three, with, I've switched firms, uh, three times. So this is the third firm I've been with and consistently worked with Amory. And each time I came back, I, I had to interview and, and in order to continue that opportunity. And, and I have made over three hundred trips, um, to Amory over that time. Doing projects from door replacements to, uh, to roofing to, um, probably my, um, one of the proudest projects of my career is the fax lab. Uh, you have one of the best and it's because you have one of the best teachers. But you have stellar teachers, stellar administrators across the board. And, uh, and we just feel, um, at LHB very proud and, uh, and very privileged to have done the work for, uh, for the district over this period of time. And so we know we've got things that we need to come back and take care of. And we know we have, uh, things in terms of just working on the mechanical system for a year after construction. So we'll continue to come back, make sure things are working. But we just wanted to come back and say thank you from the bottom of our hearts. Uh, it was, it has been a privilege. So, um, I hope everything's going great with the facilities and, uh, all of what you're doing. And, uh, and we can't wait to come back and see how things look in a year. So thank you very much.
It's been, uh, an absolute joy to work with both of you. Um, I, Dale and I are probably now the board members, the board members who have worked with you the longest on this project. And, um, you have both been nothing but professional, um, and accommodating and have stuck to your word and everything that you've promised, you've delivered on. And it's, it's honestly been an absolute pleasure to work with your companies in this process. And it's, it's a hard process. This is, this was, it took a lot of time, obviously a lot of hours to get this done, a lot of consideration by the board to get this done. Um, and it's something that's going to be a lasting legacy for this community for a long time and impact a lot of education for many, many kids' futures. And you both should be very proud of the work that you've put in.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I can't- Yeah, I was just gonna say, I've, you know, been around on the board for a while and I can't think of anyone else other than you two for, uh, the city's efforts.
There's other, there's other options.
I know you two didn't do it all by yourselves, but, uh, you're certainly here representing your firms. So yes, thank you for everything.
Thanks, everyone.
We're, we're gonna miss you now. I know, we have a look forward to it. We're gonna miss you.
We'll be back.
I hope so.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks for driving all the way up here for that. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda items for this evening. Uh, Joe, I believe you had vouchers?
Yes, I, I had vouchers and, uh, reviewed, uh, all the checks and credit cards and other miscellaneous financials. And I did have some questions that Jonathan was able to answer. Just simply, I just asked why there were multiple wire transfers from, in the same day from one bit, going to one business. And again, it's just how they come in and he writes the checks and they go out. So, uh, I would make a motion that you accept our vouchers.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to accept the consent agenda items as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing done, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda items as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passed. Consent agenda items are approved. Next, we'll move on to the administrator committee and, uh, department reports.
Okay, we'll start off at the high school. For Christmas break, our high school band took their annual four-year trip to Disney by, in Florida. By all accounts, they had a wonderful time, lots of memories made. Uh, January thirteenth, our honors band students participated in a concert. And we've got the start of second semester coming up tomorrow, or Wednesday. Future events, week of February third, we've got our annual snow week, uh, time at the high school. February third, we also have freshman registration night. That's the night where our current eighth graders and their parents come to the high school and get their first taste of what the curriculum and their choices are going to look like at the high school. We try to prep them for that as much as possible. February seventh, we're gonna do a winter reward day. We haven't done some fun things like this in quite a while at the high school. I'm not as much fun as Mr. Benson, so we're gonna give a winter reward day some fun. Um, and then February tenth and thirteenth, well, our focus for parent-teacher conferences will be our academic and career planning conferences. The focus of this is getting parents to come in to help the, um, current students with career choices for the future, as well as course offerings that they'll schedule for, for next year. And then, uh, we also have in late February, our ACT boot camp day coming up.
Halfway through the year.
I know, we talked about that today pretty crazy and, and without chaos in our building this year. You know, for a year and a half at the high school, there's been hammers and drills and you name it. And I said, wow, this is really a fun semester, wasn't it guys?
It's nice that they already left. I see you waited until they left.
They, they've heard it from me many times.
Well, we had in-service today and I want to thank, um, all my staff and all the staff in the district for working really hard. Uh, we spent a lot of time working on building goals. Uh, we had a PBS presentation. We went over a lot of data. And then teams, uh, worked in, um, K-12 PLC teams, working on collaboration. Uh, spent a lot of time talking about, uh, curriculum and courses and how things overlap each year as we move forward. Uh, middle school boys, I'm sorry, middle school girls basketball and middle school wrestling, um, has kicked off and so they're, um, getting a good start and it's been pretty fun to watch them, um, actively participate. Storybook theater just took place this weekend and I want to thank Tracy for all her work on storybook theater and she puts all the time in. Um, my main goal is just to make sure the kids get on the bus to go over there and, and then, um, perform. Uh, it is the twenty-sixth show I have seen. Yes, and so, uh, the cool part is, is I had never seen this one before. This was new because of the adjustment from Prairie Fire to storybook, but, um, I've seen most of them many times. That's enough said on that. Um, freshman registration, as Josh said, um, is coming up. And I want to thank, uh, Yvonne Kurtzalino's, who's working really hard with our eighth grader. She's also coming over, um, early next week to kind of go over with the middle school kids what their schedules look like and how it works at the high school before they even go over there with their parents. So that's really nice. We have sixth grade quiz bowl that's in action right now and, uh, Wednesday will be their second match. And so they, there's, they're split into a whole bunch of teams and they compete on a quiz bowl and that's pretty fun. Um, not as, as popular as FFA Quiz Bowl, but, but, uh, they do a nice job with the quiz bowl. Genius Hour, we have, uh, met and decided that we are going to continue to do our Genius Hour PBL program this year. And our kickoff is coming up on February fifth. And so we'll be kicking off with the kids and getting them ready to explore their driving questions and, and move forward there. Like Josh gets to take his kids down to Florida, our kids get a middle school lock-in after school on Friday. So it's not quite as grand, but, uh, they're, they're pretty excited about it. And they bring a guest conductor from like a, one of the universities and they go over things and it's pretty exciting for them. And then they play games and have food and, and what have you. Uh, we did have a middle school lockdown drill, you'll see on there. We have rescheduled that for later in February, but we have done our required worry card to have two lockdown drills at the beginning of the year. And we just felt that, um, that would be a good to have a refresher on the safety and, and bring the police department in and work with us on, on some of the kids. And we had to back that up a little bit, but we'll still do that. And then parent-teacher conferences are coming up and parents at the, towards the, I think it's Thursday, you know, they'll be getting links to sign up for parent conferences. So teachers are kind of going and setting up available times and things. And then parents should be getting that very soon. And then, uh, speaking of music, we have our middle school solo ensemble contest coming up in February. And then, um, we have in-service around conferences and we'll be, and just in the morning before the one o'clock starting later in February, we'll be working again towards, uh, doing good things for kids.
You can bring in some palm trees, can't you or something?
I'll do my best to make a phone for them, yeah.
I, I'm pretty sure they have on Amazon, like some blow up palm trees.
That's true, yeah.
Sounds good. And Jessica's-
Jessica is not able to be with us tonight?
And obviously we have those, that information. And so Abby, you're up.
I think I'm up. Elementary.
Oh, you're in the-
Okay. All right, a couple of things going on at the-
Are you over there?
I've been forgotten before. Couple of things that are going on at the, uh, elementary school. We had in-service today. Uh, we began the day with the staff meeting and then we had, um, uh, breakouts into our professional learning communities by subject area at the intermediate school. We had a presentation on trauma-sensitive schools. And lastly, a presentation by our title team on Act Twenty, which is sort of all-consuming right now. Uh, reading night, which is turned into the masked reader, occurs this Thursday evening. So we have some folks that will be in costume. They even have handlers, which I find amazing, but, uh, we'll see what that looks like. Hair and makeup and the rest on Thursday. We've got a lot of folks that have RSVP'd and that's being headed up by our title team, uh, under Carrie Shu and Lynette Wentz's leadership. So that will be a big night on Thursday. The hundredth day of school was February eleventh. Now it's February twelfth and that is the cancellation for tomorrow. So we have all kinds of activities in class where they talk about and represent the number one hundred, sort of a milestone at the elementary school. Well past halfway, so to speak. Uh, Trollhagen Tubing Field Trip will be February twelfth. Hopefully we won't have a day like today or we won't be going. Uh, that's been turned into an annual, um, excursion over to Trollhagen. We go over in shifts and we're there for the better part of the day. And actually a step back reading night. I learned this this morning. This is our thirty-first year that we've done elementary reading night, thirty-first year. So that's a lot of years of elementary reading night. And lastly, parent-teacher conferences coming up February tenth and February thirteenth. Family folders, uh, folks will see signup information for elementary, intermediate, middle and high school, or elementary and intermediate in the family folder this Thursday and how to sign up for that. So that's what's happening at the elementary.
But you know, Lynette's probably been there almost all thirty-one of those years.
And you shocked, I was so proud of you.
I couldn't help, so just, just because you were here, I just couldn't help it. Fantastic. Hundred days of school. All right, now.
Um, all right, so a couple of things that I have on the agenda. Um, Kelsey Cisco and I, who is our school psychologist, she and I are going to be traveling down to the Dells at the beginning of February. Um, the Wisconsin School of Psychologists Association puts on a great big job fair. Um, so we're going down and we said, "We're not coming back without a psych." So you can interview right there on the spot, um, if you have a really good candidate. So we're gonna go down there and try and find a school psych that's gonna join us. So shout out to anybody out there. If you know a really good school psych, Amory's a great place to work. Um, also working with the local colleges, um, five colleges in Wisconsin and I have been working with them and they have kind enough to share information with all their interns and graduates. So I'm feeling pretty good. We got a good jumpstart on that process. Um, the other thing, Rose Kubaker, the school nurse and I, we've been working on updating the physician's medical advisory agreement that our district has. Um, it had been a while since that had been updated. So she and I met with the Amory Hospital and Clinic. Um, they're a key person that we connect with. The doctor we've been working with has moved into a different position, so we're working with the clinic to identify the next, um, advisory physician. So that's what we got cooking.
Thank you. Okay. Any questions for anybody? None, okay. I guess that means that Michelle's up for a school nutrition report. Michelle, just remember to talk into your mic. I know that's a stretch, you're gonna have to really- Just so Steve can hear you.
All right. So mine's pretty quick. Um, I am the school nutrition director. Um, we have, um, the numbers are free and reuse percentages and stuff like that. The meal service, we have, um, I think I'm starting to need cheaters, people. The number served for a hundred and twenty-six thousand for this year, um, which is about sixteen hundred a day, sixteen hundred and forty-two meals that we serve breakfast and lunch. Our breakfast numbers have been over seven hundred and our lunch numbers are mid-nine-fifties. Depends on the day, of course, pizza day is higher than, you know, chicken wild rice hot dish. But, um, our free and renewed numbers are down. Uh, elementary's down from forty-seven to forty-two, forty-six to forty, forty-one to thirty-seven, thirty-five to thirty-three. And an overall average is thirty-eight percent for the district. Not sure how to get them to climb back up. Um, this year we started a produce of the month. We have offered many fun, um, new, some, some new, some not new, some new to the kids. We've done colored cauliflower this year, this month. We tried sumo oranges. We've done sapphire grapes, pluats, which they call dragon eggs. Kids like to see them too. We did an apple kale salad, head mix reviews. Um, some of the kids just thought it was lettuce and it was, was kind of what we went with. And then the next slide, we just have some pictures of the kids eating it. The elementary school kids are the easiest to get pictures of. Um, middle school, we did corn on the cob, not so well. As you can see.
Too many braces.
Pickleby spaghetti.
Yeah. Thank you to my staff. They do a great job in, um, feeding the kids every day. They try to do really good meals. And that's all I got.
Okay, well, questions? We, uh, we sure appreciate our, our nutrition staff because we know without, uh, you know, with empty tummies come empty brains. So you guys are really the cog and making sure that well-nourished kids can learn. So we appreciate you guys and I'm sure you don't hear it enough over there. So I know we don't, we don't talk about you much other than when you get to come in and ask to raise prices or tell us how many meals, but yeah. What was the favorite new thing, do you know?
Uh, for the fruit or the vegetable or for-
Any of it.
Cause we've been doing some new meals too. Um, we did a wild rice, chicken wild rice hot dish and that was kind of hit and miss. Um, the sapphire grapes and the colored cauliflower went over really well.
Those look like, they would be my favorite.
Oh, and opal app, apples are out right now this month and the kids are loving them.
Awesome. Yeah. Awesome. All right, thanks, Michelle. All right, off to our informational items, uh, with the school board election and that's Dr. Durkler.
Okay, school board election is set for April one, two thousand twenty-five. Uh, we did the draw. So the candidates in ballot order vote for two, Larry Wycheck and April L. Zeimer.
Right. And district enrollment, back to Dr. Durkler.
Okay. John and Erin and I, with Becky's assistance on the beautification of the slides, put it that way, uh, set forth to make clear student enrollment. So what you'll see here is a series of a couple of slides, which I hope, we hope, uh, is much more clear than where we left last time. So if you go all the way to the far left top corner where it says EC, that's early childhood. So in the year two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, in early childhood, there were four kids. And if you follow that column all the way down through senior year, you'll see a series of numbers, which when added up gets you one thousand five hundred and twelve kids. Physical count means you could grab the kid and put them in a seat. They physically are there. So that's one thousand five hundred and twelve kids. You'll see from left to right, the years two thousand fourteen, fifteen, all the way through two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four. At the bottom of each of those columns in bold in black, you'll see the total student count, physical count, kid you could grab and put in a seat for each of those years all the way through two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four. All of those are apples-to-apples numbers. Now here's where things I think got confused. There are really two sets of numbers. This set of numbers is used internally by the school district of Amory administration to determine how many kids we would have per class. So for instance, in the school year two thousand sixteen, seventeen, we have a hundred and one four K kids. Those are a hundred and one physically present kids. How can you divvy that up? How many people would be needed as staff people in four K? So you figure that number out. The other set of numbers, you take this set of numbers that you see here in gray and we submit them to the state, but we have to use a calculation when you submit them to the state. There are a hundred and one kids in four K in two thousand sixteen, seventeen, but to the state of Wisconsin, this spreadsheet doesn't mean anything, cause in the state of Wisconsin, you have to calculate each grade in a specific way. Four K kids don't count as whole kids. So the number that you end up with, when you look at the reported number to the state, is not what you see here. Those are two different numbers. Now when you look at the blue, the two columns in blue, the first of which where it says two, red underneath, twenty-four, twenty-five, that's the number of kids in early childhood on the third Friday count in September. The third Friday of September, we do a count of kids. So each of those numbers that you see from the top to the bottom is an actual physical count of kids that results in a grand total of one thousand two hundred and fifty-seven. The next line, next, next column next to that is a second Friday in January and that occurred last Friday. That's an actual physical count of kids as well that gets you a grand total of one thousand two hundred and sixty-two. So in physical count numbers, we actually are up five kids from third Friday in September to second Friday in January. Now that's not a game changer, but up is up. Yes, we are down when you look at longitudinal data. So when you look at the next slide, you'll see what that means. This is color-coded, so you could track a group of kids. Say for instance, the kindergarten class of two thousand fourteen, fifteen, you can track them all the way to, through two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four, when they were freshmen in high school. You can see that actual class size. And in this case, it actually went up from ninety to a hundred and nine. You could look at the class below that went from eighty-three to ninety-five. The class below that went from one twenty-six to one twenty-five. Some go up, some go down, some stay the same. When you look at twenty-four, twenty-five, you could track them in the same way there as well. You can see where they sit, were situated as a class in the third Friday count in September and then in the second Friday count in January. So now there's a conversation that certainly is, that we've been having about declining enrollment. There is truth to that statement, cause if you look at the bottom number, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, fifteen, seventeen, the next year you're at fourteen, forty-six. There's a rather significant event that happened in the spring of two thousand twenty, which resulted in the fall of two thousand twenty, number being very different. And that was COVID. And what has happened statewide and nationwide is kids have gone home for COVID and many of them have stayed home. They're doing virtual options. And that's certainly their choice to do that. So the number has been on the steady decline ever since, which is where we are at now. We're at twelve fifty-seven, which is about a two hundred and fifty total student count difference over the course of, what, five or so years? On the last slide, excuse me, you will see another big factor in graduate, in, uh, student count and that is graduation. So if you look at the column two thousand nineteen, twenty, if you travel all the way down to the bottom of that number, but of that column, you see one hundred and twenty-two seniors. In that year, we graduated, sent on their way a hundred and twenty-two kids. The following fall, so we had a hundred and twenty-two in the spring and we replaced that in the fall with a seventy-four. If you go from one twenty-two to seventy-four, that's a pretty precipitous drop of what, forty-eight kids? You see the same thing happen twenty-one, twenty-two to twenty-two, twenty-three, and again in twenty-three, twenty-four to twenty-four, twenty-five. This most recent year, we went to one oh one to sixty-five. If you look in the first blue column, there's only two, three, one hundred plus numbers there. If you looked all the way back to two thousand fourteen, fifteen, there's probably six or seven or eight hundred plus classes. It's simply a different place we are in regards to our student enrollment. Again, there's two different sets of numbers for two different sets of purposes, and we have a declining enrollment. My contention is, this is the information that has been shared in my presence, is the virtual school outfits. That's an increase and there's also, we're graduating more and bringing EMS. So I'll take any questions, John, Becky, Erin, myself, and help if you have any.
Thank you for explaining the differences of numbers.
You're welcome.
I, I think the public needed to hear that. And again, I had some questions on the actual data that was provided in last month and I really wanted the people to know apples-to-apples numbers versus the, the two different forms of way you come up with numbers for DPI and then our internal count numbers, physical students or student counts here. And again, because it means a lot, you know, over, over a year of sixty-nine kids down, you know, what is that, seven hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars in state aid?
Well, again, you have to use the calculated number, the third Friday count number because the number in two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five, at the bottom of that blue column, the twelve fifty-seven, when you calculate it and shoot it to the state is actually twelve ninety-four. Cause that's, again, that's a calculation that's used for state aid purposes. This worksheet, they don't want anything to do with this worksheet. This means nothing to the DPI.
Okay, but it's a large number.
It is, it's a dip. There's no doubt about that.
Yeah, so again, if you're trying to budget, and we're talking, let's just say, seven hundred thousand dollars, that's a lot of money to waiver and budget. So I appreciate you, you, and again, even right there to show us the fact that I'm looking at two different sets of numbers to come up with data. So.
And the best way the district has to mitigate the, the loss of students, the decrease in total number of students, is via the attrition that is staff cuts. If you have sixty-five kids in four K where you once had ninety-three, you have a different number of instructors. And we have an attrition model that's been built and discussed as an administrative team. I, I don't know how many times we've met, it has to be at least four or five, where we've accounted for that via staff cuts. And the number I gave last month is the number that I still give now. We're looking at about four staff cuts because there's a, a rather significant drop that occurs at the intermediate school where we go from approximately two eighty to two forty, that's two classrooms. That's twenty kids per, that's forty kids. That's two staff. Elementary's already had a drop and there's going to be a slight drop in addition to that. And then those numbers have been imparted to both of those buildings. We had staff meetings and we went through those. So that's what we're planning to do.
I know I'm gonna get kicked under the table here by, by the principals, but why is the middle school and the high school not in the projections of the, the, this plan here?
Well, elementary and intermediate school are cleaner and easier in regards to class size averages. There isn't any such thing as a class size average when you talk middle school and high school because a middle school instructor sees five or six different groups of kids. They don't see the same group of kids all day. What's going to occur if that number continues and we continue to have a drop is you're going to have staff reduction in the middle school and then in the high school, but the staff reduction's going to be as a result of a schedule change. And Tom's already well aware of that and Josh is already well aware of that because we've already started looking at it because you'll have to. You'll have fewer sections of English, fewer sections of civics. And then when you get to Josh's level, you'll have fewer math instructor, fewer English instructor, whatever it is, to account for the fewer number of kids that you have. We just don't know what that looks like and it hasn't hit yet. Middle school's next.
At the middle school, we're gonna actually be twenty-one students larger next year than we are right now because of the bigger class that's coming into sixth grade.
You got a one fourteen coming in, which, that's great. But then that one fourteen transitions out to the high school and behind that, if you tracked back, you're probably bringing in an eighty or a seventy. And then you have a, a less number of students and then you're gonna have to talk about what staff cuts, cuts look like there.
It simply takes time for the kids to get through the, the system.
And, and again, I think one of the things that became apparent to me at the strategic planning session was that it's not, one of the teachers used the word restructure and it's exactly what I was thinking of in some aspects of it. Because again, with today's resources that have to be provided, or at least should be provided in best practices, we can't just cut teachers and not expect to have other resources available in other areas. Or, you know, in the future, you know, again, hopefully the possibility of that school resource officer. So.
When you talk elementary and intermediate school, it's, it's clean and easy to talk about classroom sizes. Say you got seventeen kids per class in a first grade in an elementary school, such as ours. Well, it, it's seventeen with three or four kids that have plans, which then plug them into four, five, six, seven, eight other instructors that are providing those services. It just doesn't look like it looked when Abby began her career or I began my career twenty years ago. Okay, fifteen years ago. I, I know better. It just looks different. There are so many other services that kids are receiving. Go ahead, Tom.
And I know that, you know, these are the numbers we're looking at now, but you know, we also have to step back and say, you know, we're working really hard in the community to increase housing. Trying to increase daycare for supporting our local businesses and industry. Every single one of our industries says they could expand if we had daycare and had, had more daycare and it's, it's hindering them. And we're also working really hard on, on the housing development. We have good news on that in, on the horizon and that's, it's not necessarily a secret. It's been out there in the press, but as far as the housing development that is coming in and, and the apartments that we're working on. So, you know, in addition, it's, some of the things that we do necessarily are also to look at, how can we find ways to attract more people to come to town? And, and that was one of the reasons a long time ago that we actually looked at the daycare. And then one of the reasons we expanded and said we need to, to have a functioning daycare in the district is because there wasn't a good one or enough of it. And we were losing people who were actually leaving because they had to go to daycare somewhere else and they, their kids started going to school in a different district where there was daycare like in Richmond. And then they said, well, they met their friends and now we're gonna leave them there. So sometimes you have to step back and take a look at the bigger picture and say, what, what are the things that we can do to help expand and, and, and grow too? Smart growth. And so that's some of the things that I know the board has always worked on and that organizations like the Amory Economic Development Corporation and the Community Club and things have been working on. So I think it's important to kind of how all that plays in together to make decisions, to try and do the best we can for our community.
I met with the new city administrator this past Friday for a tour of campus per his request. And he asked me, his final question was, what would you want the city council to know from the School District of Amory? What are your needs? And I said, two things, more housing, more childcare. And he said, on it, it's on the radar and then some. So we are on the same page. It's now a matter of making it happen. And Tom is in a position to know that there are some things that are happening and these are good things. Any other questions about the physical student count? I think Erin, John, Becky, no graph that I've ever put together has looked that good.
No, it really hasn't. I, I was actually gonna.
Thanks. You don't need to be so quick to agree. I know better.
It, it was, it was really nice to see that. We've seen similar graphs to this in the past, but really not, this was very.
I try.
Easy, very, very nice. So shout out to, shout out to that. Being able to, to track those numbers and to be able to see these things is obviously very helpful. Hopefully that'll clear up a lot of any, any confusion that was out there. I think it's no secret that we've known that we're in declining enrollment, just like everybody else is. And I, nobody's made that a secret. So I think we've, we've looked at that. We're trying to budget for it. Internal comparisons have been had for a long time. So this was good for everybody to be able to see. Are there any other questions with the student enrollment numbers?
Shar.
Steve, I can hear you.
John, can you, I'm sorry, I'm getting feedback. Let me shut my volume off so I don't get a feedback. John, can you talk to the, the fact that the state recognizes declining enrollment and that that is a piece of the dollars that we get from the state as well?
Yeah, the, the, there's a couple of different recurring exemptions that the state of Wisconsin is, has rolled out since the state in general is a declining enrollment. One of which is a hold harmless and the other one, which is the one that we are a part of, is the declining enrollment exemption. And as of this past year, what it does is it just helps to stabilize your budget to a certain degree. And the way that they always kind of say that, and I, I forget the exact figure. I'm heading to the state ed conference, so I'll get clarification. But it's about to hold basically forty students harmless is what they say. So it kind of stabilizes your budget from year to year, so you don't see massive decreases because as Joe has said, you know, forty thousand times the per pupil aid amount is a large amount of money. So like for this past year, per our revenue limit worksheet, our declining enrollment exemption to our revenue limit was over half a million dollars, which more than makes up for the decrease in students for our overall budget. Did that answer your question, Steve?
Yes, and it, it's just important that the public recognize that the state recognizes the declining enrollment and things are being put in place to help stabilize budgets.
Is it enough? I would argue that it's never enough, but yes, they are.
Yes. I, I agree, Steve. Good, good point. I think John has spoke with that, spoken to that before. Probably last year when we were looking at budget concerns and so thank you for reminding us of that hold harmless situation. Does that answer everything you have, Steve?
It did. Thank you. I, I just want to say one final thing. It's forty-eight degrees here.
I can't hear you. I'm pretty sure that we're losing connection. All right, moving on then to the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six district budget with John.
Yeah, so I, I, I just have a couple of things. Becky, do you want to just bring up the revenue limit worksheet really quick? This is just, just to kind of show, I, I just sent Becky a couple, just highlight things. Obviously, our, our budget, we're always budgeting and we're always in a budget cycle. But the reality is the way that the, the state of Wisconsin operates, when we get information and all that sort of thing, the reason we always pass our budget in August, September timeframe is because we don't even really get good estimates for anything until the beginning of the summer. So anything that we do right now is more on the expense side and less on the revenue side. Once it hits summer times, then we start to talk more on the revenue side and how that impacts our expenses, which always makes it kind of a fun challenge to try to be at close to a net zero budget. The first piece of information that we get though is from a revenue limit worksheet estimate, but it's just that it's an estimate. And just, this is just to further answer Steve's question. This is our actual, actual revenue limit certified record from this past year. And if you look over in the middle column, it's actually, it's row ten A and you'll see it says seven hundred and twenty-two thousand, four hundred and fifty-four dollars. That is our hold harmless for declining enrollment. And as you move across the years, the more you decline, the less it is. Now, there is a cap to that, like I said, to Steve's question. If we were to slash five hundred kids, they're not gonna let us write off essentially, you know, ten million dollars. But they are doing something about it. The second thing is just simply, and Becky, if you want to bring up just the, the snapshot, this is just a very quick ten thousand foot view where we're at right now for the twenty-five, twenty-six budget. It is still very ugly. It is still very harsh. But I, what I wanted to just show is current year being in the middle, twenty-five, twenty-six being on the right, is just as a, as a hypothetical, if we kept our revenue or if we kept our levy flat from this year to next year and we advanced only certain expenditures forward and then reduced other expenditures in other areas, what would that actually look like as just a fun tent bottom line? So if you go to the way bottom, to the absolute bottom of this, this quick spreadsheet. Yeah, my head hurts already too. You can just see that surplus deficit column in the bottom. And again, I do want to mention, this is not done. This is just the beginning. But if we just maintained everything at the exact same level of where it is right now, the projection and what the Baird model is saying is that we will have a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollar deficit if we do absolutely nothing. We don't attrit a single teacher because of declining enrollment. We don't shave anything off of an expense. And to put that into context, that would be a budget deficit of six one hundredth of a percent of the overall budget. So that would be a write-off-able amount as far as accounting is concerned. So that just kind of shows, I just wanted to kind of show just some kind of numbers. And I'll happily continue to do this as we kind of have these discussions and go through kind of various scenarios and what that looks like. Again, I didn't want to go and do a full budget hearing or anything like that tonight, but I just wanted to bring something just kind of based off of where we are today. And I'd be happy to take any questions.
So with those rough estimates, right, the, the sky is not falling.
Correct. Yep, yep. The School District of Amory is a declining enrollment school, is a safe thing to say. And I think it's a very, it's, it's, yep. But I think the, the model that's been put into place for years as far as natural attrition based off of that declining enrollment and then just overall reduction in expenses from things like the, the referendum and not needing to pump a million dollars into facilities every single year is ultimately what helps. The variables that always concern me is insurances because, okay, fires be burning in California and we don't know how that'll impact us, health insurance costs and those types of things. But the good news with those is we get those numbers come March, April and May. So we have enough time to react accordingly. But as of right now, I think the school district's in a great position.
Does this take into account some of that one point nine million dollar recurring referendum? I mean, I'm sure it's always accounted for, budgeted.
Correct.
But is there, I mean, we, we have that broken out into separate categories.
Correct.
And if there was a need, now that a lot of this referendum work has been done with facilities, we could pull some money. I mean, you're talking.
The categories we created, the one point nine can be allocated to one category and only one category if you wanted it to be.
Right.
And, and that's what you see across the state, a lot of them doing is they were, they did have recurring referendums for various facilities-based projects. And, but a lot of them had to reactivate those and reallocate those categories because of the drop off of ESER. And the school district, we, we may have hired additional staff for ESER, but that wasn't our reliance point. We weren't saying that this increase in funds is the only way we're gonna pay for those. It was planned for in the subsequent budget year. So when we started talking about the fiscal cliff, there really wasn't that fiscal cliff for us just simply because of the way that you all chose to spend the ESER funds.
Right.
So how, how will those ESER initially hired, paid teachers be absorbed into our budget now?
So they were just absorbed by, based off of natural attrition. So yeah, so and, and some of them, well, I guess really.
Well, we had two teachers, a kindergarten teacher and a third grade teacher counted for via ESER dollars for two consecutive years.
Yeah.
And now that has fallen off and those teachers are still here, but we have others since retirement. So you're still even Steven.
You're still even Steven, yeah. But to, to just take that just one step further, Joe, we fully expended ESER in the last fiscal year. So our zero budget for this year includes those expenses in there, which is not the case for the vast majority of school districts.
Are there more questions or?
Yeah, I, I appreciate you doing this. Again, I, you know, I had a talk with Shar about finances and budget. And after last year, I thought our initial taxes, many of my friends who were completely pro referendum and pro, pro sports, when they received their taxes this year, they went, hey, I thought we were at this twenty-year flat base for about twenty years now. And so did I. And so I had a conversation with Shar and it, no, it didn't act, we didn't actually say that. But actually, I just remember that line graph that was out there and I remember it going like twenty years. And I think, again, a lot of us in the community were. And I think, again, a lot of us in the community were a little shocked when we saw everything went up, whether or not it was due to reassessment or not. I know, again, Steve gave me some grief last month on, on my trust in the, the staffing here and Baird and, uh... But again, I sure hope, I think, you know, that I'm learning as an adult paying taxes that we're going to have reassessments coming up, and I, you know, I don't know if we can say where they're going. Um, but I highly doubt they're getting less in value of our housing. So I don't necessarily think that that line graph was completely accurate, just going twenty and out. Because obviously, we had reassessments and everyone's properties went up. Um, that's good and bad for all of us. So, again, I appreciate it. Shar obviously contacted you frustrated with it. Thank you for communicating with me.
Yes, and I think the line graph that you're, that you may be referring to is the, the model that was prepared for, for us by Baird, which is still the same, it's, you're still getting per hundred thousand dollars worth of your property. It's still going to cost you the same amount of money per hundred thousand dollars of property for the referendum. That only took into account the referendum, it didn't take into account the total budget. And I think maybe that's where the, the miscommunication or maybe the, um, what you thought was going to happen, like everything was going to stay the same. Only the referendum portion of that is going to stay the same per hundred thousand dollars worth of property, but the property values aren't the same, whether they go up or down, that's going to change. But that value won't change per hundred thousand dollars of property. So I, I think that was maybe part of the, the confusion there, so. Hopefully that cleared that up. Do we have any other questions for John on the district budget? Um, we talked in, about this in reference with staffing considerations last month, uh, which is why John was back on the agenda for this, this month. Um, do we see a reason to have a budget hearing, uh, within the next couple of weeks? Or are we satisfied with the work that John's doing?
If you're asking me, I would say I'm satisfied with the work that John's doing and where we're at for now and for looking forward into next year. That would be my thoughts. I don't think there's reason to believe, um, that, that we're going to have mass financial chaos in the next year.
Gwen, anything?
I agree a hundred percent with Dale. I think John has answered our questions and I'm good.
Steve, uh, what are you thinking about the budget here? Is there anything that you are thinking that we need to meet soon and, uh, look at cuts?
No, I don't. I think we're in a fine spot. The only thing I want to say, maybe just a little clarification, Shar, from what you said. The, the, um, value generated per hundred thousand on taxes or for property value did change, but only because property values went up, what we're collecting per hundred thousand goes down. So that the amount we gather based off a referendum dollar stays the same. So we don't collect any additional dollars from the referendum because property values went up. The reason that, that taxes went up to the school is because property values went up and therefore state aid dropped. And the taxpayers were made to make up the difference.
Okay, and Joe, um, are we looking at having a, another meeting here for anything else that you'd like to see? Or are we good with what's been presented tonight?
No, I think we need to continue with the projections of, of natural attrition, uh, so that we don't have to raise the taxpayers' dollar.
So you would like to have a, a budget meeting scheduled soon, um, for the board to be involved in that?
I would, no, I'm not saying that. I, I think, again, I mean, I have, I have an email from two thousand twenty-three from Dr. Dersfler saying we're reducing structures, uh, since then. Uh, I mean, two, three staff reductions, saving about one hundred fifty to two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars every year next year forward. I just want to make sure that we're on that projection.
Yep, I think what I heard Joe say is that we're going to have this attrition model of approximately four people, and that would satisfy our budgetary needs for next year. That's what I heard you say.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
And yes, that's what our plan is. We've talked about it as administrative team. Last Wednesday, we had our last meeting on staffing, so everyone's full aware. Elementary and intermediate, I've met with both of them, they're full aware. It's a, it's a reality, and it's, uh, something we're planning for.
John, thank you for putting that all together. Um, obviously, you can see that it's not for the faint of heart to be looking at budget concerns with the, with the district and given state aid and...
And I would just add, you know, there, there, there might be a time when I call for that meeting just simply because it is a national, you know, presidential election year, um, regime change, and then ultimately, it's also the state biennial budget. So once we get kind of closer to that summer month and the passing of the biennial budget, I'm hoping for great things. But, you know, we might need to, to have difficult conversations, so.
Nothing that's pressing at the moment?
Nothing that's pressing at the moment.
Okay, sounds great. Moving on then to the first reading of board policy update, policy four twenty rule, school admission guidelines. Dr. Dersfler.
Sorry, this policy came up last month. The only change made to the policy is on the back of that page, number six, where it reads, "Transportation will be the responsibility of the parent guardian unless there is an existing bus route to the student's residence." That came up in light of, of policy four twenty-five, which is an action item tonight.
Questions and discussion? This is the first reading. No amendments at this point, uh, that anybody would like to add or ask for?
I just want you to reflect upon, uh, the possibility of thinking about recruitment. And if this would hinder the possibility of someone doing some form of homeschooling now, including them, uh, again, in our school, obviously, there's laws that we have to, which we're going to discuss further, but the possibility of transportation would be very minimal, I believe, uh, in assisting kids who may waver from wanting to be homeschooled to being, uh, schooled in public education. So that's the only thing I wanted to add to this was, again, I think, uh, it would somewhat assist in the possibility of having a student go full-time rather than homeschool or part-time.
Any other discussion? Okay, moving on to action items. Second reading of board policy, policy four twenty-five.
Uh, four, sorry.
Yes, sorry.
Four twenty-five, you'll see noted there, uh, in color. Uh, in the first sentence, the word may stricken and replaced with will be allowed. In the second full paragraph, are generally was changed to will be. Uh, phrase was struck out there after the word similarly in that same paragraph. In the second to last paragraph, are became will be, and in the last paragraph, shall be, uh, changed to will be, and then the last clause was, uh, stricken. Those are the only changes since last time.
Discussion on policy four twenty-five, participation of non-public school students in district courses and programs.
Second to last paragraph. Becky, can you bring that up, the statute up, please? Again, if, if we were to read, um, "Parents and guardians of non-public school students participating in district course offerings will be expected to complete registration, which includes providing the district with pertinent student information such as grant, transcripts, course history, parental guardian contact information, health contacts, health information, and other necessary information." And if you look at one eighteen, five, three, parent, two M, um, right, sorry, I don't have my, let's see here.
Would you like me to read it, Joe?
Please.
"A school board shall allow a pupil enrolled in a home-based private educational program who has not met the minimum standards for admission into high school under section one eighteen point one four five subsection one to attend up to two courses at a public school in the district during each school semester if the school board determines that the pupil qualifies for admission to those courses and if there is sufficient space in the classroom."
Does that coincide with how ours is currently written?
Well, we have that statute in policy four twenty-five, and it defines the various words that you see there. For instance, it defines the word course to mean a class that a student can take. Say, for instance, there was an, a request earlier in the year to take small animals at high school, which is a really popular class at high school, and an excellent course, that's a class they could take. We've had students in band, we've had students in choir, we've had students, um, that take upper-level science or math. They simply can't come up with those options on their own potentially, and they can take those classes and have been approved and have done that. We don't have a great many course options, uh, kids. We have four, five, six in a year typically. Um, but those who make that request typically are, take those courses.
I guess it's the requirements of registration, transcripts, whatnot, that I'm trying to coincide with the Wisconsin state statute and just that second to last paragraph.
Well, the s-
I just don't know if it...
Well, the statutes are noted in the actual policy so that we are doing those things. We do ask for them to register because we have to account for them in our system, ER needs that. We don't count them as a student because we can't and we don't, but we need to account for them because to enroll them, we can't find them if they don't exist. So, uh, 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 the enrollment period via registration is, is a necessity to that point.
Okay.
I think your, your question is, you're asking if the language that we have there of non-public school students will be required to meet the same mandatory prerequisites or alternate demonstrations of competency, and you're asking if that's in violation of what one eighteen, five, three says. Is that what you're asking?
Yes, ma'am.
No, it's not. We ask them to register for a course, we ask them to attend the course. Uh, they can be removed from a course if they don't attend, because we've had folks say, well, I can't be in the class for these three weeks. So then we, well, there's a consequence for not being in the class for three weeks. You're going to get removed from the class, and further, you're going to be really lost when and if you return. So we have denied it for that reason. Uh, we hold them...
We had a, we had a hypothetical, not even like a realistic today. It's funny that you bring this up. We had a, a homeschool family that's done some classes with us, wanted to sign up for technical college math today, and we got that information. Well, all of our students have a couple prerequisites before they can get into technical college math, so this student was going to, the family was going to provide us with documentation from the curriculum that they've been using to show that they've met the algebra and the geometry. Because otherwise, you know, whether someone just wants to come into chemistry, we don't know if they're taking biology or, you know, with the prereqs. So perfect example of that happened today, and then they're going to provide us with that stuff to try to make it happen, go through the registration process, so. Real life scenario right there today.
I think, isn't like one eighteen, five, three, two M, though, saying, Becky, could you just pull that back up real quick? Isn't it saying somewhere in there that they don't have to provide to meet those standards?
Who has not met the min, the minimum standards for admission into the high school?
Right. But I think that's only admissions into the high school, but it doesn't really talk about then the...
Admissions for the course?
Yes. So I think that's the language difference that you're looking at there, that you're asking if it would be in violation. So I think that's the two differences there. So even though they wouldn't be necessarily a ninth grader or a twelfth grader, maybe they're by what we would consider they would be eighth grade, but if they've met all of the rec, the requirements, because they could, they could certainly have moved along very quickly in that homeschool realm and meet the requirements to the class, they could participate in the class. I think that's what you're asking for. I think that's where the language, is that, is that what you're looking at, that the language is not right?
I, I am, and I think it, I'm, I'm just talking more or less about admissions rather than the actual course prep itself.
So for the admissions, it's, it's pretty simple. They can take two courses in any semester, and most of the families we work with, they're, they're pretty tuned into the language on that. So a lot of times, they know before they even talk to us what, what their limits are, so.
But, you know, but the students that we do have, I have one, and they're, they're registered with us. And, you know, they're in the system so that we can assign them in the course into the class, and I have parent names and emergency contact numbers and information if I needed to get ahold of someone in case something happened when they were in the class. But they don't, um, there's a, there's a code you, or a button you press, you click so that they're not included in your count.
If they don't continue on for second semester, then they just resort back to, they're no longer a Namory student and they're back into the homeschool portal, for lack of a better word.
Any other discussion on policy four two five? Okay, is there a motion to accept policy four two five as presented?
I would move to accept the policy four two five as printed with corrections.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to accept policy four two five as presented with the corrections from the second reading. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All of those in favor of approving policy four two five as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passed. Policy four two five is accepted. Policy four two four, public school open enrollment. Dr. Dersfler.
Uh, second reading of four two four, there's only one change, and there still is just the one change, and that's in paragraph, uh, one, space availability, and it reads, uh, maybe show in preference. So when you're talking about open enrollment of a student, it used to say shall be accepted. Uh, that's not really what we do, and we're not interested in doing that way. We'll show preference potentially to a sibling of a student who has been accepted, but it's not a for sure. So that's, remains the only change.
Is there a motion to accept policy four two four, public school open enrollment?
I would make a motion to accept policy four two four.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion on policy four two four, public school open enrollment? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote.
Gwen, did, do you still have a question in regards to courses or, uh...
No, I, I think I got it, I got it figured out, though. Thanks, Joe.
Got it?
Mm-hmm, I'm good.
Everything's good there?
Yep.
Did you have a question on that? Okay, all of those in favor of approving policy four two four, public school open enrollment as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All of those opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passed. Policy four two four is accepted as presented. Next, moving on to WIDA English Language Development Standards, and I'm assuming, Sean, you're going to take it?
I'm going to take care of this one. It is, um, in addition to the annual notice that we provide every single year in July that we are providing curriculum and instruction to our kids, this rather long way to say what I just said is what we're now required to do. And in specific, on the next page, you see WIDA English Language Development Standards. This is what we are mandated to provide the public with notice that we are doing. We are, for instance, providing to English language learners to communicate for social and instructional purposes within the school setting. And you'll see, and I don't need to read it to you, each and every one of those indicates in each and every one of those curriculum areas, that's the business that we're in the, that we are engaged in. And this is a requirement of us by the Department of Public Instruction to let the public know. So that's the nature of this. It's simply an additional public notice.
Do I have a motion to accept the WIDA English Language Development Standards as presented?
I move to accept the WIDA English Language Development Standards as presented.
Is there a second?
One second.
Is there any discussion on the WIDA English Language Development Standards? Any questions? Any questions? All right, you got off the hook pretty easy. All those in favor of approving the WIDA English Language Development Standards as presented, please signify by saying aye.
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 All of those opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passed, WIDA English Language Development Standards are accepted. Here's a fun one, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school calendar. Dr. Dierfler.
Okay.
It's gonna be worse for ya.
Not to belabor the point, but after a few meetings and feedback from staff and a first reading, we have a twenty-five, twenty-six draft calendar that we hope to make official here this evening. I'll start doing it month by month. In August, at the end of that month, we have three days of in-service. The little circle that you see there is for four K conferences with the four K parents. Labor Day is September first. Then we have some more conferences with the little people and the first day of school for all students on Tuesday, September second. At the end of that week is the first day for those four K kids, Friday, September fifth. We have an in-service date on September twenty-ninth. In services, uh, in service and parent-teacher conferences, the week of October sixth, mirroring the same week that we have right now. Uh, we have a in-service day on November third. We have off on the twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth for Thanksgiving. Christmas break is the twenty-fourth through January fourth, based on the way the days lie. In-service on September, or September, January sixteenth, that's an in-service day. Conferences and, um, in-service the week of February ninth. Spring break for the week of Monday, March sixteenth. Good Friday is Friday, April third, so we have to have that one off. In-service on April twenty-seventh. Memorial Day on May twenty-fifth and the last day of school is Thursday, June fourth, with an in-service on that day and a half-day in-service the day that follows. So those are the highlights of the twenty-five, twenty-six calendar. Jessica Smith, on behalf of the certified staff, sent to them a survey. Tom and I sit on that committee with Jessica, the calendar committee. And actually, the feedback, and maybe you feel differently, Tom, I don't think so, uh, was pretty much what the calendar already was. So what they were asking for is what it was, so that was great. So I think we're in good shape. Is that accurate?
Yep, and this gives me January second, I have to watch the Gophers win the Rose Bowl.
Oh, good lord. Oh, man.
Holy bucket.
The season's not even over yet. Come on.
What fever dream are you in, man?
Lou agrees. Lou's all in.
God, great.
We're going together.
Okay. You better start saving now if you are. Okay, well, thanks for sharing, Tom.
Then I.
If they do, I'll take the whole middle school band with me, so. Fucking can't put the lock-in anymore.
Okay, I say we amend this draft right now. Um, and this was working out okay with testing? That was kind of the big issue that we had with that, the Act twenty?
I'm not here to say it's working, it's, it doesn't, but, I mean, you can't, you have to put everything somewhere. I mean, there's a ton of testing that's gonna happen during that time and spring break's gonna interfere no matter where you put it. Because you also have to play with winter sports. If you move it into February, you've got tournaments. If you're in the early part of March, you got tournaments for hockey, for wrestling and for boys and girls.
It's better than it was this current year by having it up on the, um, middle week as opposed to the fourth week.
It's tough.
In March, spring break, yeah.
And I see graduation is still the same. No Friday night graduation. Josh has no comment.
Josh will be there whenever they tell him to be there.
Josh has no comment, okay.
I wanna just note on the calculations of the days at the bottom. I had removed all the date counting throughout the calendar, just to make it a little easier to look at. So it says student day zero. I didn't realize I've got a formula in there. So, yeah, that's obviously inaccurate. I believe it's one.
Students will be thrilled.
I believe it's one seventy-two for a total of eight-four. Does that sound right?
Yes, that does sound right.
Thanks, Becky. We do have kids coming to school. Sounds good. Is there any further discussion on the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six calendar? Is there a motion to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six calendar?
I'll make that motion.
Joe, is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to accept the twenty-five, twenty-six calendar as presented. Gosh, I can't even believe we're doing that already. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All of those in favor of approving the twenty-five, twenty-six calendar as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All of those opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passed, the twenty-five, twenty-six calendar is presented. So we're halfway through this year and working on next year.
And Tom's taking the band or?
And Tom's taking the band. You know, I, I'm almost hoping now that the Gophers make it to the Rose Bowl. I just, I wanna see that. I want, and not only the middle school band, I wanna see the high school band go too.
Cue the tape.
And you have to be responsible for all of them.
I feel pretty confident.
I have that same confidence. Okay, off to twenty-five, twenty-six open enrollment space limitations with Mr. Bahada.
Yeah, um, so DPI provides districts with kind of a caseload, um, projection formula that we can use to kind of help us determine if we might have some open enrollment spots in the, for student support of NIP for the next school year. Um, and as you can see, it gives us the caseload maximum that they recommend per teacher with, with SS on here, support staff. If we have a number of support staff also supporting students. You can see in most of our buildings, we are already over that caseload maximum for student supported by an IP. Um, the only area that we would have openings will be in our middle school. And I, um, like to kind of narrow down even more into, um, different categories that we have openings because it does matter what, what a student would qualify for or came with us, with, to us with an IP. And that's in, um, in our specific learning disability or OHI programming. We would have some openings, but everything else is closed. Our, um, as you know, our OT, PT, um, those smaller population services are contracted. Um, and so those are closed because those are contracted based on the numbers we current, we have. So we don't have a lot of wiggle room for next school year for student supported by IP to open and roll into our district. Questions?
Pretty straightforward.
Yep.
Unfortunately, the kids with needs are growing and.
Yep.
This is where we're at and there's not a whole lot we can do about that when it comes to open enrollment, so.
This was a little part of that. I was thinking of this area for restructure. You know, again, I know we may lose someone elsewhere, but, I mean, obviously if we're, we don't even, we don't even have the staff to truly help these kids currently.
Um, I think we're, I mean, these, we, we're over our projections. I think right now, you know, when we talked about staffing, I looked at that too, because I'm like, we have a lot of staff in special education. Um, but we have a lot of need. And I think we're okay right now. I appreciate you thinking that way. But, um, I think when we talked about in our meeting, you know, you know, being creative with other staffing who can also support besides just special education teachers, I think that's where we could look to support.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions for Abby? Is there a motion to accept the twenty-five, twenty-six open enrollment space limitations as put together by Abby?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on approving the twenty-five, twenty-six open enrollment space limitations as presented? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All of those in favor, uh, of accepting the open enrollment space limitations, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passed. Next, donations to the district.
Okay, we have a few. Lamperts, thank you for donating lumber for Mr. Carlson's woodworking students. We have an anonymous donor, uh, that granted us five hundred dollars to pay off outstanding, uh, student lunch balances. Dan and Carol Smith also donated two hundred dollars for the same purpose, outstanding student lunch balances. So those would need to be accepted if you care to do so.
That's pretty awesome. Again, keeping the kids' bellies full, that's pretty cool. And lots of, lots of good practical things, I'm sure, has come from that wood in Mr. Carlson's class. So, um, is there a motion to accept the donations to the district?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to accept the donations as presented to the district. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All of those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All of those opposed, please signify by saying no. The donations to the district are accepted with many, many thanks. And I'm sure a lot of those kids and families thank those people for paying off lunch balances because that's a, it's an important, it's an important tool for our learners. So thank you very much to the community. Personnel action.
Uh, new employment and extracurricular contracts, Riley Cassavant Bloom as bus driver, Caleb Frimling, JV baseball coach, Rachel Humple, C-team volleyball coach, Trace Sipierski, high school cross-country assistant coach, Nick Stewart, boys JV coach, tennis coach. Contract addendums, Tom Benson, district assessment coordinator, Jessica Di Ambrogio, director of curriculum and instruction, Sean Dierfler, interim lean elementary school principal, Josh Gould, safety and security officer, reassignment for Nicole Vesper, moving from a food server to a cook in school nutrition. Resignations for Drew Johnson, eighth-grade volleyball coach, Hannah Robinson, special ed para. Terminations of Kimberly Anderson as a special ed para and Bridget Parento, school nutrition food server.
Personal action was discussed in closed session prior to the meeting. Is there a motion to accept personal action as presented?
And I will just say, um, I might know somebody that's resigning as a volleyball coach, so I will, um, choose not to vote.
Did you say you were taking over for her?
Yeah.
I was pretty sure that that, I, I was pretty sure I heard that. That's why you're, that's why you're abstaining from this vote, right?
Yeah, I'm thinking about applying for that.
Okay, all right. I was, I was thinking so. All right. Is there a motion to accept the personnel action?
I move to accept the personal action as printed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second it. All of those in, uh, is there any discussion? Wow, that's all been discussed. Uh, all those in favor of accepting personnel action, please signify by saying aye.
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 All of those opposed, please signify by saying no.
No.
Motion passed, personnel action has been approved. On a three, one vote. I just wanna make sure I get that, um, for the record with Dale abstaining. And is there any, Becky's gone, don't community comment, okay? Even though it's kind of a packed house tonight on a, on a closed night, so that was, that was really nice to see. Any reason to go back into closed session?
No.
Board members, any reason to go back into closed session? Seeing none, I'll ask for an adjournment. Motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Glenn, is there a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor of adjourning, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion passed, meeting adjourned.